The Range Rover, but we're well on our way to becoming a mecca of 21st century transit culture.
Once completed, the Regional Connector will connect the Gold Line, Blue Line, and Expo Line. While the connector is a short two-mile project, the mayor says it will have a great impact for the city's 88,000 daily metro commuters.
Once it's completed, it will allow for a one-seat ride from East LA, where I was raised, to Santa Monica, where I used to ride my bike almost 50 years ago.
The project is funded through voter-approved Measure R, which commits a projected $40 billion in traffic relief and transportation upgrades throughout the county over the next 30 years.
No longer will riders from Long Beach have to transfer at 7th Street just to get the extra two miles to Union Station, nor will Aco friends from Pasadena have to change trains to get to the Staples Center.
Passengers will have access to three new stations in downtown at First and Central, Second and Broadway, and at Second and Hope. The $1.3 billion project will also improve 11 intersections, which will see less congestion. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
The project, if fully funded, could open in 2019. For more information about the Regional Connector project, visit metro.net/regionalconnector. Well, if you own a small business, you probably have a website to go with it. However, that's not the case for a majority of Hispanic-owned small businesses. As Gil Reyes explains, the search engine Google aims to help minority business owners get online.
Venice salon owner Marcela Gabriel is one of hundreds of small business owners, learning how to build a website to stay competitive.
I need to grow my business. It's a difficult time.
She and others taking advantage of Google's Get Your Business Online campaign. It's targeting small Hispanic-owned businesses. That's because an estimated 57% of them in California don't have websites. Of course, available online is free, so is your new website for its first full year. The reason to give LA's small businesses a much-needed boost, the mayor says their success will help deliver Los Angeles from this dismal economy.
It's important that those companies have the tools to grow, that they have the tools to make their businesses more successful.
Get started by logging on to GYBO, short for GetYourBusinessOnline.com. You could have a three-page website with video links up and running within minutes.
Less than five minutes. They help it. It's a great, great program.
The course is available in English and Spanish. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Your new website will be free for the first year. After that, it'll cost around seven bucks a month to maintain. Get started by logging on to GYBO.com for a course in English, or GYBO.com/Español for Spanish. The Los Angeles Quality and Productivity Commission recently held its annual awards ceremony honoring city departments that go above and beyond despite limited resources. Yana Kay has more.
This is the Los Angeles Business Assistance Virtual Network, a free online service offered by the city for vendors and contractors to learn about potential opportunities to do business with the city. And now, thanks to the Information Technology Agency, or ITA, the site has become more user-friendly and efficient.
We were able to reduce a lot of the paperwork. The vendors are able to upload their online documents, so they can get their legal documents loaded and registered. It gave an opportunity for many of the city departments to be able to share resources.
For this kind of innovative thinking, the ITA was one of 14 city departments to receive a Quality and Productivity Award this year. The awards honor city departments that are able to thrive and operate while reducing costs.
It does reward creativity. It does reward initiative, and it really is a bottom-up celebration.
The Quality and Productivity Awards not only acknowledge those departments that are able to save money, but the awards also focus on those projects that are able to address customer service and quality of life issues. The Bureau of Sanitation from the Department of Public Works was recognized with nine awards, one for developing a way to analyze water in a more efficient way.
So basically, we're combining the analysis of two instruments into one instrument. So it saved us time and staff, and, you know, we're trying to do more with less.
The Department of Building and Safety also received an award for cutting red tape and making it easier to obtain building permits.
We have about seven departments sitting in one office, helping you to get your permit.
Helping Angelenos by providing them with useful services that make life easier. That's what these awards are all about. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
A total of 27 Quality and Productivity Awards were handed out. And a local organization also gave out awards, this time to honor the accomplishments of area public works departments, including our very own Department of Public Works. Cindy San Luis takes us to Lakewood, where the awards ceremony was held.
Members belonging to the Southern California Chapter of American Public Works Association filled the ballroom at the center at Sycamore Plaza in Lakewood for the chapter's 12th Annual Awards Luncheon. The organization's goal: to highlight the accomplishments of public works departments and their employees.
This is the best of our industry this year. It's the kind of projects we like to see moving forward to improve the infrastructure in our communities.
Twenty-nine outstanding public works projects were highlighted at this year's luncheon, with three of them coming out of the city of Los Angeles. One of them, the Living Amphibians, Invertebrates, and Reptiles, or Lair Exhibition at the LA Zoo, is the only project of its kind built in the city of Los Angeles since 1964.
It's a pretty complicated building in that it has to provide life support for a number of different reptiles and amphibians and a few invertebrates. It's got a green roof, which makes it also a very unique structure in the city, and it's bringing people to the zoo every day.
Another City of LA project recognized is the Fred Roberts Recreation Center New Gymnasium.
It's about a 10,000-square-foot gym plus a 2,500-square-foot annex, building to replace the old and outdated gym and recreation center buildings at Fred Roberts. The facility serves upwards of 150 to 200 kids almost every day, both indoor and outdoor activities.
Following the destruction of the lawn at City Hall during Occupy LA, half an acre of the north lawn was renovated in the midst of a budget crisis, made possible through the collaboration of a number of city agencies.
Instead of putting the lawn back as it was, to save water and to be a little more environmentally sensitive, we decided to replace it with native plants instead of with lawn.
Cities and private sectors submitted nominations for projects to be recognized.
We know some people went away, you know, empty-handed, but, you know, the great projects anyway. We need them all here in Southern California.
And this event underscores the importance of public works in daily life. From the center at Sycamore Plaza in Lakewood, I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
And over at the Los Angeles Police Department, the men and women in uniform who put their lives on the line daily to protect the public were also recognized. Here's Anita Bennett.
As their friends, colleagues, and family members watched with pride, 74 LAPD officers, dispatchers, and volunteers were honored during the department's recognition awards at the Police Administration Building in downtown LA.
For distinguishing themselves for going beyond the call of duty, along with quick and decisive actions, the department is proud to award the Life Saving Medal to Officer Susan Garcia.
It's nice to know that people out there notice what we do and that it's not always with a negative stigma, so it's really nice.
Chief Charlie Beck handed out the awards.
You know, the Los Angeles Police Department has great traditions, and one of the greatest traditions is that we recognize people who go above and beyond, who do what is so difficult.
Now, the recipients are volunteers, as well as members of eight different divisions of the LAPD, including Southeast, where officers rescued the victims of a hostage situation.
Just seeing the hostages tied up, that's going, of course, it really sets into your mind where, okay, this is the real deal, and you just react from there on.
Another officer received the Life Saving Medal for rushing to help an unconscious baby.
Having six children of my own, it didn't take long before I jumped into action, just like treating it like it was one of my children.
Now, these local heroes and volunteers are being treated to a day in the spotlight for their outstanding service. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week.
The LAPD holds recognition ceremonies several times each year. But all this Thanksgiving and handshaking gives way as LA's public safety officials get competitive, as they battle to see who can donate the most blood. The Seventh Annual Battle of the Badges pits the LA Police Department against the LA Fire Department in a fight to save lives.
Every two seconds, someone in the United States needs a transfusion, and always, there's a critical blood shortage after the holidays. It's a great opportunity for the Los Angeles Fire Department and the Los Angeles Police Department to impact that shortage.
And this is just one way for two great organizations to come together, make a statement about what's important, and do something good for people.
The battle for bragging rights will take place from January 16th to February 16th, and everyone's invited. For donation sites and other info, log on to redcrossbattleofthebadges.org. And LAX takes part in this year's Tournament of Roses Parade with the spectacular float, an art exhibit about life on the streets of Boyle Heights, and making LA's most dangerous crosswalks safer. These stories and more in City Beat.
A total of 53 intersections with the highest number of vehicle pedestrian collisions in the city will be upgraded by March to improve pedestrian safety and reduce accidents and fatalities. The new crosswalk design will focus on providing higher visibility and increasing the setback limit line to better prevent cars from encroaching into the crosswalk.
The Continental Crosswalk, as they're called, features wide stripes of wider yellow paint to make it clear to motorists that they're entering pedestrian territory.
The average cost will be $2,500 per crosswalk improvement. The upgrades will be funded through the city's Measure R funds set aside for pedestrian improvements. If you watched the Tournament of Roses Parade on New Year's Day, then you likely caught LA Tourism and Los Angeles World Airport's float showcasing the new LAX Terminal. The float, seen here in the rendering, was created with more than 7,000 fragrant roses and nearly 5,000 carnations. The float, entitled Making Connections, replicates the $1.5 billion new Tom Bradley International Terminal opening this year. The float also showcased the airport's multicolored pylons, the iconic theme building, as well as a street sign that contains all of 25 of LA's sister cities. No taxpayer funds were used for the float. Otis College of Art and Design's Ben Maltz Gallery is presenting a group exhibition titled Bridging Homeboy Industries. The exhibit features work from three artists who share roots in Boyle Heights and who have benefited from the services of Homeboy Industries, which helps formerly gang-involved individuals find employment. The director of galleries and exhibitions at Otis says the artists were former graffiti artists who later turned their lives around and pursued a career in art. The exhibit will be on view through March 23rd. Reseda Recreation Center on Victory Boulevard has a new playground. The playground, which cost around $207,000, was built with cost savings from the newly renovated pool and bathhouse that came under budget.
It was a little rundown before, and now it's a nice place to come play. Everything's nice and new and clean and much more functional than it was previously.
The playground has a slew of amenities such as shade structures, a drinking fountain, a rubberized surface, six swings, and three slides.
Disadvantaged youth in the City of Angels are getting a leg up on a brighter future with the opening of the new YWCA campus. Anna Marcos takes us to South LA for the ribbon cutting.
Celebratory cheers fill the air as this community greets the grand opening of the new YWCA urban campus. The YWCA runs job corps training programs aimed at giving at-risk young people a shot at jobs. But now, this campus in South LA also gives them a place to learn and to live, with state-of-the-art classrooms and dorms.
People deserve an education, no matter where they're from, who they are.
It's about giving people second chances. It's about opportunities. It's about reaching out and saying, you know what? I believe in you, and you can reach for the stars and follow your dreams.
The biggest standing ovation is reserved for Fay Washington, the force behind the $70 million project.
I have the soul of every young person in this place, and it's a soul that says, if you need, and I have it, then it's yours.
It was many years ago that Fay came to my office in Washington, DC, and said that she had this dream of building this place where young people could come and could develop their skills, to give them a second chance, to give them hope in a better future.
The YWCA helps about 1,200 at-risk young people a year. That's 1,200 more at-risk youth who can now move on to better futures. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
In this week's list of things to do, visiting the LA Zoo in 2013. A lecture all about mid-century modern, and what's better than watching Mary Poppins for free at the museum?
The UCLA Film and Television Archive and the Hammer Museum have teamed up for a matinee screening series of new and classic family-friendly films from around the world. And on Sunday, January 13th, at 11:00 a.m., you can catch the Disney classic Mary Poppins at the Hammer Museum, located at 10899 Wiltshire Boulevard. Tickets are free and available at the box office, one ticket per person on a first-come, first-served basis. Arrival at least a half hour prior to program time is recommended. Go to hammer.ucla.edu for more information. And we're promoting this event a little bit early, as the Los Angeles Public Library's Allowed Lecture Series events tend to sell out quickly. On Thursday, January 17th, at 7:15 p.m., join a panel discussion on architecture, photography, and the good life in Cold War California. The talk, titled Mid-Century Modern, will center around the hugely influential photographer Maynard L. Parker, who aimed his lens at the mid-century masterworks of the LA architects and designers whose homes embodied the American dream. The event will be held at the Central Library's Mark Taper Auditorium, located at 630 West 5th Street. Go to lfla.org/allowed for details. And 2012 was a banner year for the Los Angeles Zoo, which boasted nearly 1.6 million visitors. And in 2013, visitors will be able to see some new additions, including 15 baby ghosts and a colobus monkey born on December 21st. Found throughout the forests of Central Africa, the colobus is one of the most striking primates in the animal kingdom. If you didn't get a chance to visit last year, put that on your New Year's resolution. For more information on the zoo and its exhibits, go to lazoog.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
G'day. Troy McCuvin from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
And Mr. Englander Wood, we've got a good team here this morning. Thank you very much. Good morning. This is Wednesday, the ninth day. Let's cue it up, Kenny, for everybody. This is the ninth day of January 2013. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon Buscay, New Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Caress, Corrine, LaBanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Wesson. Twelve members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
So approved by, moved by Councilman Caress, seconded by Mr. Weezer. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Moved by Mr. Parks, and seconded by Mr. Zine. Next item.
Mr. President, there's been a request from a member to continue Item 27 to January 16. Item 27 to January 16.
Item 27 to January 16. Is that all right with everybody? Without objection. So ordered. And, members, could you direct your attention to the agenda? And if there's any items, let's run through the agenda and call those items special.
Very good, sir. Items one through five are items noticed for public hearing.
Item one through five. Any specials on one through five?
Mr. President, we do have cards on Items 1, 2, and 4.
Okay, so we'll call those special. Next item.
There are remaining items to be voted on, sir.
Very good. So let's open the roll on those remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
12 eyes. Thank you.
Mr. President, Items 6 through 10 are items for which public hearing... Mr. President, items six through ten are items for which public hearings have been held.
Public hearings have been held. That's a good thing. Let's, any specials six through twelve, members? Six through twelve.
Six through ten, sir, pardon me.
Sorry, six through ten. Correction. No one calling any of those? Let's open the roll on those. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes.
Mr. President, items eleven through twenty-six are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Twenty-six special by Mr. Englander. Twenty-six and a half special by Mr. Buscayino. Twenty-six special. Any other items called special? On those? Repeat that, Mr. Clerk, so everybody knows.
There are items eleven through twenty-six. There are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, let's, uh...
Sir, you can, you can move, uh...
Consideration. Move for consideration.
Very good. That, you can do that without objection, sir.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes. All right, they're in front of us for consideration now.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, item six has been called special. We do have cards on items fourteen, sixteen, and nineteen.
Fourteen, sixteen, and nineteen on cards?
And item twenty-six has cards as well. It's also been called special by the members.
And it's special by Mr. Englander. So with that, and no other specials from the members on that group of items, so let's call those specials on the balance of the items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Twelve eyes. Next item.
Mr. President, items twenty-eight and twenty-nine are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I want to call on the fine Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items twenty-eight and twenty-nine can be considered an open session unless members have questions that they'd like to have asked in closed session. And item number twenty-seven has already been continued. Thank you for that.
So, members, we have those two items. Mr. Clerk, will you just, for the record, read them in? And if any members have no objection, we'll, uh... Mr. Parks?
Two items for second for some questions.
Hold the two items for questions. Thank you very much. So we'll hold those items. We'll get back to them. So we run through the agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, we have.
Well, good job for you and all the team in the City Clerk's office. Let's take the first item up.
Mr. President, at this point in time, we can go to item one, called special for cards.
Good. Item one. And let's call on, uh... I want to correct you, Stella. Arlington, is that correct, Stella?
Harrington.
Harrington, I'm sorry. Sorry. John Walsh. Maria Valencia. Please come forward altogether, and you can speak. And Maria Mazes, is that correct? From Sun Valley. Thank you, Sergeant. Excuse me, Sergeant, would you ask the staff member to go to the ropes? Thanks. Thank you. State your name, and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall.
My name is Stella Arrington, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to come to today. I found out yesterday afternoon that it is a hearing in regard to the street lighting in our, our community. That we, we start, we've been start working in this project science a year ago, and I've been putting hundreds and hundreds of hours for this project. And I found out yesterday that this is an incomplete project. We, our project was supposed to be eight blocks, no four, and for that reason is what we hear.
Thank you. On this item, ma'am, this is an item of number one. Mr. Clerk, just for clarification, this is not the Sun Valley item, but you, but this is on, this project right up here, as you see on there, on Cesar Chavez? I'm going to ask Lisa to go to the ropes, just to clarify. Mr. Walsh, please.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. It's a perfect example of racism. Perfect example. Did you hear what they did? They promised him an eight block for lighting. They only got four blocks. Now, in Hollywood, it's lit perfectly, so you can get raped more easily in Hollywood.
Mr. President, he's not talking about item one.
I'm talking on their item.
Thank you for the clarification. Please, thank you.
Okay, I, see, constant heckling by, remember, anybody, Perutunich, vote hundred percent. Constant heckling of me. HollywoodHighlands.org, you are still racist. Everything, the way you treated those people is racist.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh. Stay on the subject.
The subject is, you are Tio Taco. You know what a Tio Taco is? You know what a Tio Tomaso is? HollywoodHighland.org.
Does it have anything to do with item one, Mr. City Attorney? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, yes, Mr. City Attorney. Mister, I didn't hear, Mr. Alarcon.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Walsh is mistaken. The people that just spoke were speaking about item number two, which is next on the agenda, and they will have an opportunity to speak at that time.
Okay, there are no more cards on this item. If we could open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That brings us, Mr. Clerk, to what item?
Item number two, called special for cards.
Okay, item two, I think it's a Maria Mares, Stella Arrington, Furley Perez, Maria Valencia. If you guys could please come forward.
Good morning again. My name is Stella Arrington, and I live in the city of Sun Valley, 12019 Peoria Street. We do have, uh, we, we come from Peoria Neighborhood Watch. Peoria Neighborhood Watch been working in different ways to, to have our community saved. At this time, we've been working very hardly over a year ago in a project, the street lighting. The project was approved in the beginning. We, the, the councilman, now is not more, our councilman, Councilman Cardenas told us that it is $728,000 for this project. So, not, yesterday, in the afternoon, I found out that the project isn't finished, and today is the hearing, and that is what we hear. We want to see our project complete the way how we're supposed to be, the way how the councilman promised us. Thank you.
Next, please.
Okay, my, my name is Maria Mares.
Good morning, my name is Maria Mares.
Y vengo a hablar cerca del proyecto que ya se había prometido.
I'm here to speak about the project that had been promised to us.
Que nos iban a poner luz en esa área.
With regards to lighting that was going to be installed in that area.
La vez pasada vinimos y nos dijeron que sí, que nos iban a mandar las cartas.
Last time when we came, we were told that letters were going to be sent to our addresses.
Y a nosotros nunca nos llegó una carta.
But we never received such letters.
Y en el mapa está que no está mi, la calle de nosotros, la Nina, no está incluida en el mapa.
And on the map, our street is not included. Nina Street is not included on that map that we received.
No mandaron las cartas. Con eso quieren decir que, que no. Nadie apoyó, pero...
Since the letters were not mailed to us, what does that mean? That no one supported or backed up that project for those streets that we live?
De los que yo sé, nadie les ha llegado esa carta, y no les llegó.
As far as I know, the residents that live on the streets have not received a letter, and none of us have gotten a letter either.
Y creo que sí, ese nos prometieron, y había ese dinero, y nosotros estamos esperando que nos contesten con hechos, no con papeles.
And I believe, that's what we were promised, and I believe that funds were available. So what we are asking and expecting is for you guys to respond with actions, not with documentations.
Ya estamos cansados, que siempre la política sí es.
We're always tired, because we've realized that the policies are such, politics are also such, where you make promises, but you don't meet the promise. Thank you.
Next, please come forward.
Mi nombre es Maria Valencia. Vinimos por el mismo proyecto de que hemos bien prometido.
Good morning, Maria, Maria Valencia. We're here in regards to the same project, the project that was promised to us.
Porque anduvimos este en reuniones, y hemos bien prometido Tony Cardenas que sí nos iba a poner las, las luces en...
We went to a lot of meetings, and Mr. Tony Cardenas promised that the lighting on our streets would be installed.
En las calles porque sabe, todos sabemos aquí que hay mucha delincuencia en nuestras calles, y está muy oscura.
We need lighting on our streets, because as we all know, there's a lot of criminal, criminal activity in certain areas, especially in the streets that are very dark.
Entonces el encargado de la luz dijo que si todos estábamos de acuerdo en nuestra área, que pusieran la luz, porque nos había dicho que nos iba a costar de setenta dólares por año.
So the representative in charge of the power side told us that if we all agreed, they would install the lighting on the streets, and they would assess a seventy dollar per year, per household fee, which we agreed.
Entonces dijo que si regresábamos las, todos las firmas, pero entonces a nomás a una persona de nuestra área le mandaron. Y yo vivo en la Roy Penn, y con una sola firma no van a decir que nadie este estuvo de acuerdo.
They also asked us to send and gather a lot of signatures and send it to them. However, with only one person in our area who received a letter, and that's only going to be one signature that they will receive, therefore, they're going to conclude that none of us agreed to have the fee assessed, so that we could have our lighting on our street.
Y gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mi nombre es Ferly Perez. My name is Ferly Perez. Vivo en la Nina Street.
My name is Ferri Perez, and I live on Nina Street.
Eh, hace años nos prometieron esta cantidad y la aumentaron. Pidieron hasta más fondos.
Uh, some years ago, they asked us to pay an additional fee, so that we can get the project going, and we paid it. And not long ago, they raised our fees again.
Y el proyecto que se había hablado no está completo, porque no incluyeron la calle, las calles que están cerca de Laurel Canyon.
And the project is incomplete, because the streets that are near Laurel Canyon are not included in that project.
Hace un mes a mi hijo, apenas había agarrado vacaciones, y el primer día de vacaciones de la escuela, le robaron en frente de, de mi casa el teléfono.
Um, about a month ago, my son was on vacation, and his first day of vacation from school, right in front of our house, his telephone, or cellular phone, was stolen.
Cosas han pasado siempre en nuestra calle, porque está muy oscura.
A lot of criminal activity has always taken place in our street, because it is very dark.
Y no ha habido ningún cambio, y para completar, no incluyeron nuestra calle también.
And we haven't seen any changes. And to top it all, they did not include our street in that map.
Gracias.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Mr. Alarcon.
Is there somebody from staff who could, maybe from CD six, who can tell us what's going on here?
Do we have any department people or representatives? In fact, let's do this. Why don't we hold that on the, the desk for a moment, and we'll see if we can get some staff people or someone that can respond to that. So what's the next item, Mr. Clerk?
That's item four, called special for cards.
Okay, it's my understanding we have Ms. Williams here. So we'll just have her speak privately with Mr. Alarcon, and see if we can address these concerns. Okay, now, item four. I have the same people, Stella Arrington, Maria Valencia, Maria Mares. If we could get translation, please.
And, Mr. President, can counsel inquire of these individuals if they're talking about this lighting district? Because the comments should be limited to this lighting district.
Can you help us with the translations?
It does have to do with the lighting. It has to do with lighting district, and I have more to say about it.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason why I, I need to add is because I, I'm sure Mr. Alarcon has something to say in the, in our community, because he knew very well our community, and he do know me, that he knew I've been working, I've been volunteering my time for almost twenty-five years. It's why this time I...
Mr. President, I don't know, I don't believe she's talking about item number four, which is a hearing on this item.
See, they have two items, four and two, which both deal with lighting districts. So go, this area where Mr. Alarcon grew up, go right ahead.
I'm talking about street lighting.
Okay. Um, like what I said before, I, I've been working too many, too many hours in this project, and when they come with the half of the project, we need to know where the $725,000 planning to move. Because what Mr. Cardenas told us, if we don't do, have the project, the money has to go back to San Francisco. He also told us this is, um, federal money. I don't know if this is quite right or not, but I'm just repeating the word that he told us in the meeting. Whether it's, um, federal, city, or state, all what we want is our light, our community light up. The name is Sun Valley. We should have a lot of sun in our community, not dark. We also been having a rates in our community, no one, no two, more than that. And we also, we, we didn't say nothing. We trying to just accommodate our problem and work with the people who've been getting hit. We don't want no more hit people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Arrington, Valencia, Mares. Okay, I guess we're, we're good on this issue. Mr. Alarcon, can I take you off the queue, or did you want to speak on this one as well?
No, actually, I just want to try to explain. I'm, I'm not familiar with this particular issue, except with what the staff just told me. But obviously, the more, more area, the larger the area is, the cheaper it is for the residents. So they want to be added on to this area, and the assessment would be cheaper for everybody. So I think it's, it's incumbent on the Bureau of Street Lighting to tell us why these areas were not included before we vote on this. There's two separate ones. They're all in the same neighborhood. I don't understand that either. But what I'm understanding is some of the areas could not get to fifty percent, and they, they move forward with those areas that did vote fifty percent. But I, I think the Bureau of Street Lighting should explain both items two and four.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Rosenthal?
Mr. Alarcon, I mean, things need to get done while the new person gets elected to that spot. I just signed some paperwork, waiving something that would go to my committee for CD six, which of course I will do as I've suggested. But I really think we could address this issue right now and, and get a solution going with Street Services to get the lighting going in there. The street lighting. If we could have them come and speak or do something with them, Mr. President?
Do we have anybody for street lighting?
Mr. President, who's been...
Mr. Labange.
Who's been appointed caretaker of the sixth district?
Uh, Jerry Miller has just been appointed.
All right, so Mr. Miller can handle it. Mr. Miller.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, thank you. Good job.
Mr. Rosenthal, you can direct questions to Mr. Miller.
That's great. Hello, Mr. Miller.
Good morning. Perhaps if I could suggest that you continue this item for a week. We've got the CD six staff talking to these folks. Street lighting is not here. I'm not aware that there's any urgency that it has to be done today. So if you could continue it for a week, in the meantime, we'll figure out exactly what's going on. Um, I'm not aware that there's any urgency that it has to be done today. So if you could continue it for a week, in the meantime, we'll figure out exactly what's going on.
Why don't we continue both items, two and four, for one week? Mr. Clerk, and that date would be?
Uh, January sixteen, sir.
Okay, the next item, is that item fourteen?
Mr. President, yes, that is, uh, item fourteen.
Called Special for Cards. Mr. John Walsh. Okay, uh, Mr. Alacon.
And also number four, well, four is
Two and four have been continued.
But number three is also in the same same area as well as, I believe, number five. So are you recommending? All four of those items should be continued, I believe, right? Yeah, it's the same explanation.
So now, Mr. Clerk, we voted on, what, items one, three, and five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then we'll ask for reconsideration. Let's, on those three items, this vote is for reconsideration?
No, but, Mr. President, it's my understanding that, uh, the the subject area does not include item number one.
No, that's, that's a chav.
Okay, yeah, you know what? That's CD fourteen. So let's, now, we're dealing with items three and five for vote for reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, so now we'll continue those two items to the same date as items two and four.
And that's January sixteen, sir.
All right, that brings us where?
Item fourteen called Special for Cards.
Mr. Dude. Yes, set the clock.
Uh, yeah, well, the street lighting is not important to me because I'm a penguin. Uh, this other item, yeah, anything to do with property is important. Uh, penguins have a place to live. Human beings have to go through all kinds of junk just to have a place to live. What is wrong with us? Do you know what's wrong with us humans? We are a damn greedy bunch.
Stay on the item, stay on the subject.
Yeah, the subject is greedy.
No, the subject is rent escrow account.
Yeah, the rent escrow comes about because people are not able to afford the places.
No, it does not, Mr.
They cannot afford to fix them. So you fix it for them. You take the rent until they fix it, right? Am I on the right subject?
I will stop you when you get off.
All right. So you take the money and, uh, you deduct taxes from everything and you still make us pay parking and all kinds of stuff. Uh, and you make us pay and pay and pay and you rob everybody with a license. We need to stop doing business that way. We need to provide housing for everyone without any red tape.
Thank you. Okay, no speakers on the queue on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, uh, now we'll move on to item sixteen. Mr. Walsh. And Mr. Walsh, John, before you start, uh, and hold his time. I have always treated you with the utmost respect and will continue to do so, but I request that you do the same where it relates to me. One of the biggest insults that you could ever give a man of color is to call him an Uncle Tom, so I don't take that lightly. So now with that said, speak to this item, item sixteen.
And I don't take it lightly that the mayor is hanging out with zetas and murder women and children.
Let's stay on item sixteen.
Well, you were off the subject, so I decided I would. Uh, in in fact, this is, the issue here is one I've never dealt with. I don't know the people out there, the seventy thousand people watching. This is civil service exemption. What this means is they're voting this out. You do not need any qualifications. All you need is for the mayor to appoint you indirectly. Now, in places like New York City, thousands upon thousands of them. Here, when we had Bradley, a proud black man that I spent in front of him for five or six years and never insulted. Then, because of what we had, eh, in New York, thousands. Here, Bradley kept it down to a few. Now the mayor of our city, and you want to see him, go to TMZ. The mayor squirms right now. The mayor
Stay on item.
The issue is that civil service exemptions are crooked. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Mr. Dude.
Yes, uh, I would never call you an Uncle Tom.
Look, just stick to the subject.
But I will call you Uncle Sam.
No, you will stick to this subject. This subject is item sixteen and it's about a civil service exemption exemption. That's what you will speak to or you will not speak.
Okay, civil servants are totally unnecessary. So give them all an exemption, okay? In fact, fire everybody and let the people do the ruling. We, the people, are the government. You're only the administration of our money. Without our taxes, you could not run your show. Thank you.
His comments are irrelevant to this matter.
They generally are. Okay, with that said, if we could please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. Buscaino, Mr. Englander, are you ready? So at this time, Mr. Clerk, if you put those back, let's go to item twenty six. Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Council President Wesson. I'd like to thank you for waiving, uh, this item, Rules Committee, and promptly scheduling it before the full council uh, so that we can have this discussion of this critically important issue before us. Though the great city of Los Angeles is noteworthy and unique in many ways that we can take pride in, we also have a dubious distinction that as chairman of our Public Works Committee, I'm very concerned about. We have the worst roads of any major city in the nation. The poor quality of our roads costs L.A. drivers about seven hundred and fifty dollars in additional vehicle maintenance costs, vehicle depreciation, and gasoline consumption every year. And for a good half century, from the nineteen fifties to the nineteen nineties, street maintenance in Los Angeles was chronically underfunded, resulting in the deterioration of our road system. Utilizing new twenty first century technology, the Bureau of Street Services has developed a successful pavement management program. And with the commitment of the mayor and the city council, we are now adequately funding street maintenance and have stopped the deterioration of our streets. Unfortunately, though, we've we've stopped the streets from getting worse. There simply isn't enough money in our stretch budget to improve them. Decade after decade of deferred maintenance has resulted in a three billion dollar backlog of streets that must now undergo costly reconstruction to bring them back up to good condition. A few weeks ago, Councilmember Englander approached me and asked me if I wanted to partner with him to work on a solution. And he made a very compelling argument. Interest rates now are at an all time low, um, and actually, a forty year low, and there's never been a better time to borrow money to invest in our critical public infrastructure. We are proposing a twenty year, three billion dollar bond that will reconstruct every failed or nearly failed street in the city of Los Angeles over a ten year period. Not only will this proposal decrease vehicle maintenance costs, it will create thirty thousand new jobs, increase property values, improve emergency response times, and decrease traffic. I look forward to a productive discussion on this proposal today, and I'd now like to turn it over to my partner and colleague, Councilmember Englander. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, and I want to thank Mr. Buscaino, who has really hit the ground running as the newest council member, uh, and dealing with this issue as the chairman of Public Works. This is one of the biggest issues that we've got to deal with, period. And it's not going away. In fact, the problem is growing every single day. Uh, this is, we can sit here and point fingers all day long and look at the history on how we got here. In fact, when I started working on this issue with the former chairman of Public Works, my predecessor, Councilman Greg Smith, and working with Street Services and Bill Robertson at the time as the general manager, looking for ways to catch up on this backlog, I've got reports dating back here to two thousand and two, uh, and two thousand and four, when we started looking at this issue. Uh, the reports that were presented to this very body talking about a special tax and special assessment or general obligation bonds, that there's absolutely no way to catch up on this crumbling infrastructure that's actually costing people money. Uh, one of the things we looked at is, if we bonded for a program, what could we do to ensure and restore faith in local government? What can we do in working with the people in Los Angeles where if we made such a bold move that we can ensure we're going to increase and maintain those streets in perpetuity, uh, in good condition? What can we do to ensure the money is locked in specifically for street improvement? How do we ensure we have a citizens oversight committee, uh, with audits and and to make sure that the money is spent efficiently and effectively? Uh, we looked at all of those things, uh, and we came up with some very, very good solutions. And this is a, uh, a bold move, uh, one that we really ask that you consider and think highly of. This is, uh, uh, we're asking for Angelenos to invest with a return on their investment. This is the first time where if we've looked at bonds and a lot of people have talked about tax increases and, uh, it, people can't afford it. A lot of people are out of work. Uh, what it's doing right now, though, is the cost of maintenance, uh, as my colleague just stated, we're the highest cost of car ownership because of maintenance in the in the United States. On average of seven hundred and forty six dollars per vehicle. Uh, this is a direct return on investment which would save them. It would also expand and enhance uh, cycling and pedestrian safety throughout the city of Los Angeles. It has so many environmental benefits that I know, uh, our general manager is going to get into. And so, working closely with the Bureau, I want to thank staff who has spent, uh, months and months, if not really years, in in getting their arms around the issue, coming up with uh, what are very viable and reasonable solutions, uh, that are going to make the city of Los Angeles the world-class city it should be for the future. And so with that, I'd like to ask, uh, our general manager, Nazario, if you could, uh, take the center stage and the table and walk us through. Everybody should have a copy of two documents on their table, uh, both the PowerPoint presentation from the Bureau of Street Services as well as an FAQ, frequently asked questions. By the way, the photo on the front, which was the sinkhole where, uh, failed street we had swallowed a fire truck. Actually, if you see the little guy in the suit behind the, uh, the fire line there, that was Councilman Corret standing there. I wanted to give him a photo credit for sharing his photo with us for the cover of this report as well. With that, good morning and thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmembers Buscaino and Councilmember Englander. It was a pleasure working during Christmas time and, uh, the holiday season, working with you from Boston where I was having my vacation time, but it was, it was great. It was a great opportunity to communicate and really tackle this huge challenge that we have in front of us. So thank you very much for your understanding, your patience, and your support. Uh, thank you, uh, and, uh, and good morning to all of you council members. Nazario Salzada, Director of the Bureau of Street Services. Uh, we have a PowerPoint presentation ready for you. And, um, it's about it's comprised of about twenty slides. So I'll try to, um, I'll try to go over this this presentation as, um, as quickly as possible. But I'm going to take some time to emphasize some of the relevant aspects of our street network. The first one, of course, is that L.A., our city, has the largest and most congested municipal street system in the nation. Um, how big is it? It's comprised of approximately twenty eight thousand lane miles of streets. Well, Nazario, twenty eight thousand lanes, lane miles, what does that mean? Well, twenty eight thousand lane miles of streets are equivalent to a ten lane freeway between the cities of New York and the city of L.A. It is equivalent to a two lane highway between the city of L.A. and the city of Paris, France. The equatorial circumference of our planet has twenty five thousand miles. So with our street network, we can go around planet Earth one point twelve times. That is the magnitude of our street network. And that is perhaps the biggest challenge that we have, that its size, it's extremely, extremely big. But the street system was not always that big. In the nineteen fifties, we saw the, uh, what we call today the San Fernando Valley expanding in exponential proportions. The fifties, the sixties, the seventies, and even parts of the eighties. Um, at that time, city government was more interested, more focused on developing the city. Bringing more neighborhoods, bringing more businesses, creating commercial centers. And we were not paying a lot of attention to the basic uh, the basics of our public works infrastructure, in this case, our streets. We were not properly maintaining our streets. And as a result, you know, our street system aged with minimum or no maintenance at all. Um, in nineteen ninety eight, the Bureau of Street Services adopted MicroPaver, a state of the art, uh, elite pavement management system in the world. As a result, we analyzed in detail every single block of the seventy thousand city blocks that we have in the city of L.A. And for that, we have a pavement condition index. It was in two thousand and five when we released our first State of the Streets report. As a result of the State of the Streets, um, both the mayor and this city council decided to increase the allocation, the budget allocation that we were, um, uh, reserving for streets. In the old days, our average allocation was fifty million dollars. We were only paving fifty miles per year. It was simply insufficient. Today, our budget allocation is approximately one hundred million dollars. But solid pavement management practices, um, will tell us that one hundred million dollars is a good amount to maintain streets that are in good to fair condition. We cannot repair or reconstruct streets that are in poor or failed condition. Now, we're going to go to number three now? Yeah. We have a sixty year backlog of failed and near failed streets. That is approximately one third of our street network. In addition to, uh, the normal problems that we we all relate to, the physical condition of failed streets cause significant challenges, including longer police, fire, and rescue response time to emergencies. Um, it also produces an increased traffic congestion, longer commute times, and unsafe maneuvers by people driving on our streets. Typically, an L.A. motorist will pay an average of seven hundred and fifty dollars a year in maintenance per car in L.A. So if you have two vehicles in L.A., typically, um, households in L.A. pay fifteen hundred dollars in, um, in repairs associated with the condition of the streets. Which is, by the way, the highest in the nation. Um, bad streets also affect curb appeal and subsequently reduce the property value of our houses, of our neighborhoods. Bad streets create unsafe crosswalks for pedestrians and schoolchildren. And as we, we know very well, especially in the flat areas of of the San Fernando Valley, streets in bad condition create stagnant water, standing water, that increases the risk of West Nile virus. One of the other challenges that we're facing right now here in the city of L.A. is that the sources of funding for street repairs and maintenance are extremely constrained. We are seeing, seeing the constant declining of state funding from gas tax. Um, in reality, IRA and Prop one B funding are now exhausted. Um, bad streets do not promote economic development and therefore job creation is tremendously affected. Um, there are very few job training opportunities for unskilled labor and very limited chances of learning new skills. Furthermore, bad streets damage the the image of the city. It makes us look like we are, uh, we are a city in decline. And in reality, And in reality, when we send that message, we are not supporting urban development initiatives. There are also environmental threats and problems associated with bad roads. There's additional air pollution created from traffic congestion. There's a significant amount of material, especially asphalt and concrete, that is not being recycled and is going directly to landfills and, of course, forces the utilization of more natural resources by not reusing the old asphalt. The most recent State of the Streets, which is the 2011 version, shows that 1/3 of the street system, approximately 31%, are in what we consider fail or near-fail condition. 2/3 are either good, satisfactory or fair. The reality is that 31% is the most expensive type of repair that you can perform on any pavement. That 31% that you saw on the prior slide, can you go to the next slide, please? Basically, can be subdivided this way. There are approximately 58,000 lane miles of streets that require reconstruction, streets that totally failed in LA. And there are approximately 29,000 lane miles of streets that are about to fail, for a total of 8,700 lane miles. Just so you get an idea, we have in LA 8,700 lane miles of streets that are fail or about to fail. That's three times the size of the entire network of the city of Oakland. We have three times, you know, our failed streets is three times bigger in terms of miles than the city of Oakland. Now, why do we need to reconstruct our streets? Simply because when you have good streets, we provide faster 9/11 emergency response by police, by fire and by paramedics. By having better streets, we improve the traffic flow. Investing in our street infrastructure creates, under this bond, the opportunity to create approximately 30,000 private sector jobs over the 10-year tenure of this program. And of course, provides the opportunity to train the future labor of LA to become proficient in protecting and performing the work related to maintenance and construction. If we are to fix the failed streets and these streets in LA, we will be saving $745 per year because we won't have to spend $745 per year repairing our vehicles. We will have smooth roads for bicyclists and we would have a quicker installation of bike lanes. We would have, of course, pedestrian safety, improved pedestrian safety. And subsequently, we would increase our curb appeal in our neighborhoods. Subsequently, property value will increase. There are, in addition to the benefits that I just mentioned, there are environmental benefits as well. If we move forward with this proposed bond, we would be recycling 100% of the old asphalt removed from the streets. We will reduce travel times for commerce, motorists and public transit riders. We will improve the business climate and we will support urban development and job creation. We will upgrade our image in LA. We will be a business-friendly city. Our image will be very, very attractive along commercial corridors. We will reduce health issues such as the threats of the West Nile virus. And of course, we will take this opportunity to integrate new technologies, new green street measures and technologies. This slide right here shows the typical behavior of a street in LA. Just picture any street in LA. The streets in LA do not deteriorate in a linear fashion. No, this is the way that streets deteriorate. It takes a while before you see a significant amount of deterioration, typically between 10 and 15 years. And this is why it is so critical that we provide preventive maintenance on the streets so we can extend the serviceable life of streets. That's precisely what the Bureau of Street Services is doing right now with the current level of funding. We are protecting streets that are in A, B and C condition because the level of funding that we have must be utilized to save our street network. Once you go to the reconstruct level, layer, streets can be up to 40 times, repairs can be up to 40 times more expensive than if you perform the repairs on the green areas. If you see the next slide, pretty much it shows you a comparison of time versus cost. During the first 40% of the life expectancy of a street, this is where we need to invest the money to maintain the conditions of the street. And this is where our predecessors in the past committed the mistake, that we did not invest enough money in preserving streets. What happened is that 1/3 of the street network followed into the category where the streets, the repairs, cost approximately 40 times more than performing maintenance. And this is the reason why, at this point, we are proposing this bond to address approximately 8100 lane miles of streets that are in the categories D and F. Next slide, please. What you have right here is a historical overview of what we've done in terms of reconstruction. Solid pavement management practices will tell you that we should not invest in reconstructing streets unless we have enough funding to improve the overall pavement condition of the network. The reality is, the current level of funding only allows the city of LA to maintain streets in good, excellent and fair condition in those conditions. So, very little of our annual budget goes to reconstructing street. Every year, out of the 900, out of the allocation that we receive, the Bureau of Street Services only invests 20% in reconstruction. And that's what you see on the years 2004 through 2013. This proposed bond will increase the amount of reconstruction, of rehabilitation that we are going to perform. Every year, for 10 years, we will reconstruct approximately 900 lane miles of streets. At the end of 10 years, we will not have any streets in the city of LA in D condition or in F condition. The majority of the streets in LA will have an A condition or a B condition. That is one of the reasons why we are proposing this bond. In addition to improving the quality of life of the Angelenos, this bond will eliminate the 60-year backlog of F and D streets. We are asking to partner with, you know, the property owners because this is the only way to solve this big challenge that we have. We need 10 years to accomplish this work. There is no way that, if this money was available right now, that we could accomplish this work in less than 10 years. So, we are basically trying to partner with property owners through a bond to finance a 10-year work program to fix all streets currently in a D or F grade. This will vastly improve the overall condition of the street network in LA. Needless to say, during the life of the 10-year bond, the city will continue preserving all the other streets in A, B and C condition. So, this will be a joint effort. We will maintain streets in A, B and C condition, in those conditions, and we will utilize the bond to address, reconstruct streets that are failed and streets that we simply cannot afford to reconstruct with the current level of funding. At the end of 10 years, no street will be in a fail or near-fail condition. The overall condition of the street network will be A and B. Now, this is not anything new. Other cities in the nation have used bonds to pay for street reconstruction. The cities of New York, Chicago, most recently the city of San Francisco in 2011 approved a similar bond. The cities of Austin, Texas, Seattle, Houston, Minneapolis and many other cities in the United States use a general obligation bond to fix their streets. One of the typical questions that we hear is, how are we going to prioritize streets? Well, I mentioned before that the Bureau of Street Services utilizes the most sophisticated pavement management system in the world, which is called Micropaver. The Bureau of Street Services inspects the condition of every LA street in a three-year cycle using specialized equipment and high-definition vans that capture images of the surface, of the stresses of the streets. These images are analyzed by specialized staff and are categorized by Micropaver. And this is the way we grade streets, A through F. A being good, B being satisfactory, C being fair, D being poor and F being failed. Maintenance and rehabilitation activities are prioritized by Micropaver. Based on the level of funding, Micropaver makes a recommendation to maximize the funding that we are receiving. And that's why currently, Micropaver is recommending that with $100 million that we receive per year, we focus our attention in maintaining streets that are in A, B and C condition. At the end of the 10-year program of the proposed 10-year bond, we will not have any streets in D or fail condition. Transparency, fairness and accountability are variables that are extremely important to all of us, especially to the residents of the city of Los Angeles. Streets that are funded through this bond will be selected using objective recommendations from Micropaver. We are generating, we are putting together maps for each neighborhood council that will depict the streets that will be addressed using this bond and the progress of this bond. There will be a citizens oversight committee that will regularly advise council, this council, on program implementation. These bond funds will not be used for any other city or state purpose. And these bonds will be deposited into a special street repair trust fund, will be independently audited annually.
Natalie Brill with the City Administrative Officer. The general obligation bond that's being recommended by the department would be paid through the assessed value of real property and the timing of the bond issues would be done based on the program presented by the department for a total of $3 billion over a 10-year period. The bond would be issued $300 million over the 10-year period with the average annual payment over the life of the bonds being about $34 a year. This is equivalent to the average monthly payment, $2.89 a month. The property owners would be assessed over a 29-year period.
Summarizing, all of us, we inherited a street network that deteriorated with very little or no maintenance. I think this is a great opportunity to change the face of LA, to invite the growth of LA, to incite economic development, to bring job creation and more than anything, to improve the quality of life of Angelenos. So, we're asking you, we're asking this honorable council to approve this bond request and to forward our request to the city attorney to prepare the resolutions placing this measure on the May 21, 2003 ballot. Now, we're ready.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Nazario. Okay, before we begin, I do want to compliment Mr. Englander and Mr. Buscaino for all of the hard work that you've done on this issue. It is easy for us as a council to focus on our fiscal crisis and some of the other things that are every bit as important may get lost in the shuffle. We appreciate that you have brought this back to the table because my guess is every member of this council, when you go to community meetings, people want to know about streets, sidewalks, trees. I mean, that is the question that we get asked all the time. So, I really appreciate the hard work that you've done. However, with that said, I think that the critical piece, in order to make this work, there has to be a partnership formed with the community. We need to take advantage of the many, many neighborhood councils within the city that want to get engaged on this level and on this issue. So, what I have requesting of Mr. Buscaino and Mr. Englander is that we would continue this item for a week to next Tuesday. And then, at that point in time, Nazario and you guys can present us with how you would do outreach and then we, as a council, will decide if that amount of time is a sufficient amount of time to engage Angelenos throughout this city. So, is that fair enough with the two of you?
I just want to say thank you for those kind words, Mr. President, on both of our behalf. We have spent a lot of time and I want to thank staff particularly and Natalie as well and so many people who've been involved in this. This is one of the biggest issues, bar none, as you mentioned. It's the number-one issue and phone call that we get day in and day out to our offices. That's most consistent and it affects people every single day. The outreach component, which we've given thought to and haven't put the full plan together, I just wanted to give you a quick thumbnail of what we're working on. The idea to bring that back and present it on Tuesday, I think, is very critical. But we want to talk with neighborhood councils and homeowner associations, businesses, the media, residents, non-governmental organizations, public hearings citywide, advocacy organizations, the environmental community, the cycling community, our unions, the chambers and service cabinets. Every council member to have a person dedicated on their staff will go and meet with the organizations in their own district as well. And so, we will put that plan together. It's critically important. It's one of the biggest things, certainly the biggest dollar amount in terms of a bond that's ever been proposed in the history of the city and that component is critical. So, thank you, Mr. President.
No, I thank you. And again, in order to do this right, we want to make sure that we afford every community entity the opportunity to get engaged. Members, it is my desire, but at the end of the day, it will be up to you that we would reserve our questions for today. And we would ask those questions on Tuesday, the date in which we were going to continue this item. But we do have individuals that are here today on public comment. So, Mr. Englander, I think I've counted 20, and Mr. Buscaino, 22 cards. We'll give each person one minute and we'll start off with John Walsh, Kelly Martin. We'll give each person one minute, and we'll start off with John Walsh, Kelly Martin, and I think, Mr. Martin, Mr. Rosendahl wanted to give you a shout out, and Daniel Drabek. Yes, Mr. Walsh, please.
John Walsh blogging on HollywoodHighland.org. If you vote for this, this is 29 years you will have to pay for this. Other cities pay not through bonds, they pay out of their budget for street repair, and that's the way it has been in this city since we took it over 100 years ago. $6 billion because $3 billion in interest. $6 billion, the taxpayers. Eric Garcetti's not here, Wendy Grule is not here, and Ms. Perry. I want them to tell us whether we should pay for this. And if you're a renter and think you're not going to have to pay the tax, you definitely will, because every year, your landlord gets to raise your rent according to a formula. This $6 billion obligation will mean that every taxpayer and every renter in this city will pay, and 31% of the roads in this city get an F. You get an F. You caused these roads, and now you want to bail us out.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Martin, Daniel Drabek, Jessica Meany.
Actually, that's Ms. Martin.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Kelly Martin, and I'm a longtime resident of Los Angeles and a lifelong bicycle commuter. I speak today on behalf of the policy recommendations from the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition and Los Angeles Walks in regards to the street bond measure. As city leaders, many of you have said that the era of car-first thinking in L.A. is over, but we have yet to see that on the vast majority of our streets. A measure like this gives us a blank canvas on streets all across the city. It's time to be creative with our streets and make them all they can be for bicyclists, for pedestrians, for transit users, and for drivers, too. We want to build the public right-of-ways of the future, not the streets of the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name is Dan Dayback. I'm the director of Cycle and L.A. Bicycle nonprofit. I'm speaking on in behalf of the recommendations made by the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition and Los Angeles Walks. In order to maintain our status as a world-class city, we need to take forward-thinking action with how our streets are accommodating the growing population. Cities like New York are prioritizing bicycling and walking infrastructure because they realize that our current automobile-prioritized streets will not keep up with growth. By creating complete streets with all projects funded by the bond measure, we will calm our streets, making them pleasant for walking and biking. Complete streets will create economically vibrant commercial districts and will improve the public health by encouraging active transportation and by building a network that promotes clean air. I respectfully ask that you include language into this measure that ensures street treatments for all transportation modes. Thank you.
No, thank you. And next, if you'd come up and state your name.
Jessica Meany from the Safe Routes to School National Partnership. Good morning, city council members. My name is Jessica Meany, and I'm the Southern California Policy Director for the Safe Routes to School National Partnership, as well as a 15-year Los Angelino resident who's lived car-free for an entire 15 years. I travel on transit, biking, and walking, and to me, a community that values all the members who live in that community, regardless of how they travel, is one I want to be a part of. I'm deeply concerned that sidewalks are not more a prominent part of this proposal. I'm primarily working here in L.A. County with Metro and looking at transportation finances. You'd be shocked to know that over 20% of all the trips we make in the county are on foot or bicycle, and we're receiving 1% of the entire amount of transportation dollars we spend in this county, and close to 40% of our roadway deaths here in L.A. City are people out walking and biking. If pedestrians aren't a key part of this proposal, I'm really concerned, especially our most vulnerable group, which is, in my perspective, our school-age students, age 5 to 15, which 35% of walk to school in L.A. City. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I want to apologize in advance because I know I'm going to butcher some of these last names. So if I could get Stella Nagigi, maybe, if that's close, and Kellen, last name begins with an S, Eric, who's with the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition, just have you guys come up and let you pronounce your last names. Please, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Stella G. I heard that the mayor announced that all crosswalks are actually going to be high-visibility crosswalks. I'd like the direction he's going in, and I actually think he deserves the kudos for actually taking steps towards making that decision. I also, in the future, would like to hear the mayor install pedestrian scrambles in areas with high-foot traffic. My fear is right-hand drivers making right-hand turns into me and actually seeing other people almost getting hit. The point and the need is implementation of collision-reduction measures with concentration to continental sidewalks. The bond must ensure that all crosswalks are included and not just certain areas that are not deemed important. And I would also like that...
Thank you, thank you. Is it Kellen?
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
Last name's Cybil. I am a cyclist and bicycle mechanic. Projects like parklets and pedestrian plazas such as the one in Silver Lake can more easily be implemented along with street repaving projects. My neighborhood definitely has a bunch of areas with unused roadway space that could be put to use by providing a public open space. This bond should leverage opportunities to create inviting public open spaces, since our streets are our largest public areas. Thank you.
No, thank you. In fact, thank all of you for coming down. Hopefully, you're Eric, followed by, is it Martin Lopez, followed by Peter Ruby.
My name is Eric Cohola, and I am a longtime resident of the South Side, and I'm also a member of the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition, and I've lived without a car for the past five years. I use public transit, and I'm constantly walking everywhere. And I believe this bond offers a tremendous opportunity to provide funding needed to make, I guess, my daily commute safer, as well as, by particularly improving the quality of sidewalks, which I constantly have to look out for, given, like, you know, at night, bad lighting and everything, you can, like, easily fall on a crack. And whether anyone's, like, walking to a car, or like, just walking to a bus stop, or like, walking to, just walking a bike, or walking anywhere, transit in L.A. just begins and ends with sidewalks on our feed, essentially, and I basically respectfully request that this proposal includes a dedicated plan with revenue for sidewalks. Thank you.
Eric, thank you. Martin, Peter Ruby, and I believe it's Colin Bogart.
Hi, I'm Martin Lopez-Yuff from the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition, and in addition to riding a bike, I walk, I take the bus, and I even drive sometimes. And I'm, on a daily basis, aware of the bad road conditions on my commute from downtown to Culver City. I'm on Venice, I'm on Seventh Street, Fourth Street, which are, I think, some, have some pretty bad conditions. And it's only when this bond includes language about complete streets, not just cars, that you'll get the support of people who ride bikes, people who walk, people who are in wheelchairs, people who take the bus. Since this bond was proposed last week, there's been a bunch of articles, blog posts, and so many comments I see are coming from people who would love to ride a bike, would love to commute on a bike, but the dangerous road conditions keep them from doing so. Thanks.
No, thank you. Please come forward.
Hello there. Thanks for listening to us. My name is Peter Ruby. I live in the Melrose Fairfax area. I am a pedestrian, a cyclist, and an auto driver. One thing I notice in my community is that a lot of my Jewish friends and neighbors there really prioritize time with family, on the streets, walking, bicycling, and that area between La Brea and Fairfax is actually an ideal place to raise a family, because you do have this kind of interaction. What we're asking for is the same thing you want to put forward with the measure, and that is to improve the quality of life in Los Angeles. And we know that neighborhoods thrive when people enjoy being on the streets, when they feel safe on the streets. So we're hoping that all of the money allocated to this has a comprehensive plan that encourages and allows people to feel confident about being on the streets. I'm a new father. I would love my son to be in an environment where she feels safe, and we can do that if we think of everybody here. That's all I have to say, and thanks again for listening.
Well, thank you. Next.
President Weston, councilmembers, city staff. My name is Colin Bogart. I'm with the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition and a longtime resident of Los Angeles. All great cities, Paris, London, New York, et cetera, are judged by how great it is to walk in the city, not by how smooth across-town drive is. I've previously lived in Prague and San Francisco, and I've visited New York, and I've visited London, and I found this to be absolutely true. The ease in which I could travel around the city without a car was tremendous. When I moved back to Los Angeles 13 years ago, it was a bit of a shock to discover that it was not so easy. I see this bond as a great opportunity to make a change in this city and to make it truly world-class, but it's only if the language of this bond reflects that our streets include both roadway and sidewalks and provides improvements for all users. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joe, I think it's Borfo, Joe Marquez, Alex Campbell, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Joe Borfo. I'm a Los Angeles resident all my life, cycling advocate and enthusiast. I commute to work by bicycle, and I have two children, who I would like to be able to walk to school and ride in a bike to school in the future. But right now, the conditions in my neighborhood are atrocious. I live in a relatively low-income area, and it's right by the school, and the school is great, but it's right in front of a terrible intersection that many accidents have happened. I fear for my kid's life just walking out of the house, because there's no traffic calming, they don't see stop signs. Anyhow, I would like to say that streets need to be better designed to keep our kids safe walking and biking to school. Also, in a cost-effective manner, since we're starting from scratch, we need to do good rehabilitation.
Thank you. Mr. Marquez or Marquez.
Yes, my name is Joe Marquez. I'm a local cyclist and a small bike shop owner. Right now, our other departments don't have any say in street services. Since these streets have already failed, we should let other departments like L.A. DOT and City Planning have input on the sequence so they can sync up with these rehabilitation projects with other projects that are happening, like bike lanes and traffic calming. We need these departments to work together better so that we're spending money efficiently to get as many streets as possible. As we do this, there needs to be citizen oversight for this $3 billion program with cyclists and pedestrians represented. Also, we should include annual reporting and performance metrics to keep the faith with taxpayers that the city is getting the results for the investment, making the information available in various languages, and using the Bike L.A. provided by the Dutch in representation of all this money that's to be invested in a city that's world-class and social, its transportation system. Thank you.
Okay, Joe, I'm gonna give you a minute to plug. You're located where, and what's the name of the bike shop?
It's a small, small shop. It's called Cycle Dynamics, and we haven't gotten too much off-the-ground here in L.A., so we're still working on that.
Okay, well, good luck to you.
I appreciate it, though.
Good luck. Alex Campbell, followed by J.J. Hoffman, followed by Megan Kavanaugh. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Alex Campbell from Community Health Councils. I'm a mobility policy analyst. I'm just here today representing Community Health Councils, which has been at the forefront to eliminate health disparities in South L.A. The $3 billion Street Repair and Safety General Obligation Bond Program will raise money to help improve streets. However, there is a need to improve more than just streets. We need sidewalk repair and also including streets and the whole streetscape. This initiative presents a very comprehensive opportunity for the city, and we just need to make sure this is done correctly. We also need to make sure there's coordination and communication between all departments in the city, whether it be planning, the bike plan, the mobility element, and the community plans. This is a great opportunity to be able to find all those different projects that can come form those plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. J.J. Hoffman.
Hi, good morning. I'm J.J. Hoffman. I'm with the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition, and I support the policy brief that was submitted by the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition and by L.A. Walks. Less than two years ago, Seventh Street was given a bike lane, and not long after that, L.A. CBC conducted a bike count that told us that bikes on Seventh Street more than doubled thanks to the bike lane. This shows us that bike lanes get people out of their cars and onto a form of transportation that does not wear down the asphalt. So as a taxpayer and as a citizen and as a bicycle commuter, I would urge you to please consider more bike lanes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Megan Kavanaugh, followed by, I think this is Deborah Murphy, followed by Eric, it's either Eric Burns or Eric Bruins. Yes.
Hi, my name is Megan Kavanaugh, and I'm a pedestrian, and so are you. All of us are pedestrians here in the city, and I agree that our streets are a mess, and this is a great opportunity to fix them up. But we need to remember that the street doesn't end at the curb, it goes all the way to the property line, that includes the sidewalks, so that when you walk to your car, you can get there without having to hop over the launch ramps that are created by the tree roots, or you don't have to get out of your car into a bunch of weeds. There is a $3 billion pot here allocated, and if we divided it by existing mode share, $1 billion would go just to sidewalks. So that's almost equal to our sidewalk repair backlog, which is very lucky. The fact that we're considering this general tax that is paid for by everyone should be taken into consideration that we need to include everyone in the benefit. So, thank you.
No, thank you. Ms. Murphy, followed by Eric, followed by Don Ward. Yes.
Good day. I'm Deborah Murphy. I'm the founder of Los Angeles Walks, and I also serve as the city's Pedestrian Advisory Committee Chair. I'm not here in that function today, however. We just did talk about our sidewalks, critical thing. We need to remember that our entire street is the road and our sidewalks. We currently are being sued at the city of Los Angeles for not making our sidewalks ADA compliant and accessible. This bond can provide the funds to address the lawsuit and improve the quality of our sidewalks for all people of all abilities, especially those with disabilities. We're better off going into the settlement talks with a revenue and a plan than if we continue this current paralysis on not resolving this lawsuit. We are all pedestrians. As soon as we get out of our car, we get off the bus, we get off our bike, we're all pedestrians. We've talked about how sidewalks have more to do with property values than do the roadway surface. In a business district, that sidewalk is the front door to that retail shop. That is a key part of our environment.
Thank you. Thank you. So next, we have Eric, followed by Don Ward, followed by Sharon Cummings.
Yes, good morning. My name is Eric Bruins. I'm the Planning and Policy Director for the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition, and thank you very much for listening to us this morning, and thank you to the two councilmembers that brought this issue to the forefront. It's a very critical issue. I think our main concern is that if you're talking about essentially blacking out 31% of all streets, we want to make sure that what goes back on those streets is a future transportation system rather than a past transportation system. And so what we don't see in the current motion is the coordination with planning and with L.A. DOT to make sure that those staff, the staff in those departments are going to be able to keep up with the workload that's coming out of street services. We also want to see the ballot language reflect the vision of this future, so we want to see complete streets language, that the purpose of this measure is to serve all road users as a key piece that's integrated into this rather than an afterthought. So I encourage you to take a look at the policy brief we've submitted and incorporate our recommendations into the ballot language. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Don Ward, Los Angeles native. I want to say I agree with everything that people have said back here. What we have is, you guys have described a transportation system that is beating up our cars. The fact is, is that our cars are also beating up the transportation system, and we've done nothing over the last 40, 50 years to help people that don't use cars, that don't cause wear and tear on our streets, to be safe on these streets. 50% of all car trips are actually local, bikable, walkable trips of less than three miles. Moving forward, I will support this measure, and we will support this measure, if it includes a future configuration that covers all modes, keeps everybody safe. You can count on our support for this if you guys codify... a future configuration that covers all modes, keeps everybody safe. You can count on our support for this if you guys codify that language into this measure. Thank you.
Yes, please come forward. Are you Ms. Cummings? Followed by Jack Humphreyville and Joanne Yannick Garb? Please come forward. Okay, Ms. Cummings?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm Sharon Cummings. I chair the Mar Vista Community Council. I'm here today as a private citizen because, obviously, neighborhood councils have a 60-day turnaround time for this sort of study and outreach to our stakeholders, and somehow that notion disappeared. My friend Ken Alpern emailed me, again as a private citizen because he's also an M B C C board member. He has some questions, and from the amount of email I'm getting on this proposed bond measure slash tax, I think a lot of people are thinking the same thing. How can we be assured that this money won't enable more movement of L A D O T and L A D W P funds into the general fund? Why are we going to pass a bond measure when we haven't done the adjustments within the operations of the departments to make them more efficient and to preserve services? And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. And I really want to thank you for coming down and to let you know that I've had discussions with Mr. Englander and Mr. Buscagno, and we plan on coming up with a way, or they plan on coming up with a way, to get the neighborhood councils more engaged. We do want to take advantage of the great advice that you provide to us. I just wanted you to be clear on that. Mr. Humphreyville?
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you very much.
No, my pleasure. Mr. Humphreyville, followed by Yvonne Garb, followed by Dal House Dude. Yes, sir.
My name is Jack Humphreyville. I'm with the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council. I'm sorry it's only a minute. Mitch, Joe, good job. No numbers. We need numbers, details, and projections. But I think you guys have a lot of nerve to be asking us for more money. You refuse to live within your means. You have not engaged in meaningful pension, budget, and workplace reform, yet you won our dough. We're talking about $1 billion between the sales tax increase, the road tax, the storm order fee, the trash fee, the D W P, increase in the D W P transfer fee, and the mayor's $200 million trash fee, to mention nothing about the cost of the exclusive trash franchise. We talk about reform. Reform 5,000 people? You don't tell us the cost of billions of dollars to taxpayers and ratepayers. 4% contributions to the pensions? You fail to tell us that the people have gotten a 35% raise since Vera Ragosa came to town. Pension reform, $15 million versus a $1.3 billion pension contribution?
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Garb? And I hope I didn't mispronounce it. Followed by Dal House Dude.
It's Joanne Yvonne Garb, West Hills Neighborhood Council. I'm not for against the project. I'm against the rush, rush, rush of this issue without giving the neighborhood councils a chance to weigh in yet. With Brown Act considerations, it would take us at least 60 days to visit the issue. Also, we have no information, really, to consider. I hope this is not another sinkhole for our money. I have a personal stake here. Last winter, it cost us and our insurance company $2,200 to fix a pothole damage to our little fit. Even if we put in a claim with the city, the cost will still come out of our pocket. The city skated for 40 years deferring street maintenance. Then it took another 15 years to get started on the repairs. Where were you guys for 55 years? That's a pretty long time. So now it's rush, 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 when you had 55 years at least to do something. Thank you.
Okay, I sure wish I could get those 55 years back, Ms. Garb. It'd be easier to get up in the morning. Okay, Mr. Dude, the last speaker.
From all the comments, I judge that we move slower than penguins. We don't look into the future. We're all talking about monies and taxes and all that. What if we create a system where everybody has a place, and we all fix the streets together? We don't give the contracts to those greedy contractors that charge way too much for what they do. Why can't the neighbors go around the streets fixing them with the right materials? Neighborhood councils could do the street fixing. Hey, we talk about billions of dollars when everybody's homeless. We are stupid.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this item will be continued until next Tuesday. Mr. Clerk, what day is that?
Mr. President, that's Tuesday, January 15.
Okay, let's prepare to move on. Mr. Rosendahl, did you?
President, just as a comment.
Pull your mic closer, Bill, so you can be here.
Yeah, the cyclists that are here. We've had a fabulous relationship over the last seven years, and as we go forward with this project, absolutely every aspect of cyclist involvement needs to be part of the process, step by step, and should be very friendly as part of the solution. Obviously, cycling is part of the solution going forward. And to my colleagues on this issue, many of you know I was chair of Public Works when I first joined the council. I talked about bond measures to clean up the streets. We've been talking for many years about this issue, and frankly, we have to resolve it because that poor street is impossible to fix unless you're willing to invest in it. And so we need to consider that. I obviously agree with neighborhood councils to be involved in the process, for God's sake. Everybody needs to be involved in the process. But thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. So, Mr. Clerk, what item?
Mr. President, we still have Item 19 before us. Item 19 called special for cards.
Okay, Item 19, I have Mr. John Walsh and Dal House Dude. Please come forward.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to the front page online. Or go to Jack Humphreyville. This concerns the LAPD solving cold cases. It's millions of dollars for cold cases. I just want people to know, when you give LAPD, now, I would prefer that the LAPD spend money bodyguarding the mayor, the way they did in Cabo San Lucas, and find out from the LAPD what the mayor was doing.
Stay on the subject.
He's a relevancy police. The cold cases, it's an absolute waste of money. I want you to realize, when you're spending money on cold cases, you're taking money away from street maintenance and core job, core performances. That's what the city should be doing. HollywoodHighlands.org. Let's break 7,000.
Mr. Dal House Dude?
I agree with Mr. Welch. Cold cases are cold. They're freezing. They're frozen. And no money should be spent on cold cases. We should spend money on providing better protection to people so crimes are not committed against them and later become cold cases. We should provide a way to finance everybody a place so that nobody has to go out onto the streets and become a victim of crime. And remember, crimes are only really solved on TV. In real life, the police does not solve most of the crimes. Television is just propaganda telling us that the police forces are so efficient that they solve every case. They got way more cold cases than warm cases. And we do not need to be spending all our money on stupid items. We need to put our monies so that everybody has a home, everybody has protection from all the elements, including the criminal elements, so we do not become cold cases someday.
Say no speakers on the cue.
Let's open a roll, close a roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that concludes that item. Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Mr. President, do you wish to adjourn the special meeting? Excuse me. Kidding a little ahead of myself. Would you like to recess the regular meeting and convene the special?
Okay, we will do that, but Councilman Corcoran?
Mr. President, we still have numbers 28 and 29 on this agenda. What I'd like to do is request that number 28 be continued for one week, and Item 29, unless Mr. Parks has additional concerns, we can resolve an open session right now.
Very good, sir. Item 28, one week, that would be continued to January 16. Mr. President, you can move that without objection.
Okay, so let's move that item.
And for Item 29, in the case entitled Ellen Ginsburg versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
Okay, and let's open a roll on that item. Let's close a roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that takes care of that item. That's Item 29. So now we can move into the next phase?
Again, sir, would you, at this point in time, would you like to recess the regular and go into the special meeting?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's move into the special meeting.
Very good, sir. Alarcon, Buscagno, Englander, Garcetti, Weiser, Carrasco, Corrigan, Lavanch, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zion, Weston, 13 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President?
Okay, so what's the first item?
Mr. President, Items 30 through 32 are items noticed for public hearing. We do have cards on 30 and 31.
Okay, so let's go to Item 30 for cards. There's no one on the cue on that. Let's go with John Walsh on Item 30.
Mr. President, perhaps if no members wish to consider Item 32 or call it special, we could vote on that matter at this time.
Okay, so that'll be 32. But we also have 30 up for public comment, don't we?
Pardon me, sir?
We have 30 for public comment at the moment.
There are cards on 30 and 31. There are no cards on 32, sir.
All of them the same. Okay, so we'll take both items up, say no on the cue.
We could vote on 32 at this matter if you'd like, sir.
Okay, let's open up for rolls for Number 32, say no cards. Let's open a roll. Want to see what it is?
32, our hearing protest against the proposed improvement and maintenance of the Kelowna Street and Laurel Canyon Boulevard lighting district in Council District 6, sir.
Okay, Bill. All right, so let's open the roll on 32, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, take care of that item. So we'll back to public comment on 30.
Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to MayorSam.com or RonK.LA. And this item, this is a special meeting, so we get some extra time. This is a hearing protest, and you see, there's no one here. I don't think any of them are here to protest. To show you how penny wise and pound foolish this city council is, which has allowed 31% of the roads in this city to reach F, this is about a tax lien. In other words, this is unpaid taxes by corporations. In fact, there's hundreds of millions of dollars unpaid. But these two poor companies, I think they probably didn't make enough political contributions to the mayor or to city council. What we're talking about here is Union Parking Service for $23,880 and 20 cents. That's what we're wasting our time on. The next one is Balcon Corporation, B-A-L-Q-U-O-N, and they only owe us $12,000 plus $50 plus 43 cents. That's what this is all about. This is all about. These are the low men on the totem pole. They weren't able to juice things. You don't even see them here. We are wasting our time and effort, but accumulated $3 billion for bond, $6 billion when you add in the interest. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, please use your name.
We just need to look into the future a little more deeply, create a parallel system where we don't need to be talking about all this BS. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a request from, okay, let's finish 30. Let's open a roll, close a roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that concludes those items. 30? 31 up? Okay, so let's get John Walsh on Item 31.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Here it is. This concerns, the theme of today's meeting has to be neighborhoods and lighting district corruption. And actually, this is a good, this also concerns protest. If you don't have the juice, you don't get the lights, okay? Actually, you've done a good job getting rid of the carbon lights, I want to tell you. I remember when we had carbon lighting in Hollywood, the lights would go out every six months. Now that you've upgraded, but you don't get the lights. Come to Hollywood. All our side streets are totally lit. I am talking about lighting. Now, if you, he runs the meeting, let him run the meeting. I am talking about street lighting and protest, and you tell me.
Please, sir, please calm down.
Anybody peruse Tanis? Garbage!
Okay, calm down, sir. Okay. Okay, you're out of order, sir.
Mr. President, I think that was a horrible comment by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, or anyone who has a specific lighting district issue, please come to the ropes, ask the sergeant. He was speaking for something in Hollywood. He can address a Hollywood-area councilperson, not Sotell. I believe our city attorney was correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I will talk about lighting. We are not enlightened enough to really run things. We are really, oh, yeah, too tarnished. You are the smart one. Besides, white people are not even white.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this hearing.
We call things by another name. White people are not white.
His extended discussion of irrelevancies may be disrupting the meeting.
Disrupting the meeting, sir.
Not a terrible comment, but we can run the whole city in all different colors, but unless we run it properly, what good does it do?
Sir, again, please clap. Thank you very much. Okay, so let's open the roll and close the roll on this item. Tabulate vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Alarcon, I believe you have a request on Item 30 before we close the special meeting? Do you have a request?
Actually, I just want to reconsider Item 32. It's in the same category of those other items that were street lighting districts. They're in the same area, and I just wanted to get it on the same track as those other items.
No objection?
Mr. President, we should first vote to reconsider the matter, and then we can vote on, or we could consider Mr. Alarcon's request to continue the matter thereafter.
So let's open the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now it's before us.
Request that we continue this matter until February 16, or?
January 16, sir.
January 16, excuse me.
Okay. Say no comments, and thank you, Councilman Alarcon. Let's open a roll, close a roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, so that's been continued?
Mr. President, do you wish to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Yes, let's go there.
That takes council back to general public comment.
All right, general public comment. We have a few cards with us. I'd call it Mr. John Walsh, Daniel Jones, Hip Hop Talks. Please come up to the microphone. We called your name. John Walsh, Daniel Jones, and Hip Hop Talks, please come up to the microphone. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, concerning the mayor, I'd like everyone to go to TMZ and put in Vera Ragosa and see what it says. and see what it says. Mayor squirms. Mayor squirms. I'm telling you, I was thrown out of the meeting Friday because I said the mayor was at a party in Cabo San Lucas where there were prostitutes. It was psychotic ravings. Now, the entire media agrees with me. But you know, the mayor may be going with prostitutes at Charlie Sheen's party. Go look at TMZ. They had a poll. 60,000 people answered. Is the mayor lying, or is Charlie Sheen lying? 94% said the mayor is lying. We know what's going on here. But you know what? No matter how much the mayor hangs out—remember, this was in a foreign country. He went to another country. He was surrounded by four LAPD officers. And I've asked the LA Times to find out exactly where the LAPD officers, his bodyguards, were during the party. Were they also having sex the way the Secret Service had sex? They've admitted sex. Were they also taking drugs the way the ma—were they also drinking at the party? These are questions I've asked, and the garbage—and I don't—I'm not talking about City News Service—but the three ladies that are the press here, and that would be Lindt Kim, Zanheiser, and Orlov, are in love with the mayor. They're in love with him. They get hot and bothered with him, and they wear knee pads. The LA Times and the Daily News do nothing. The only thing that we got on—the only reason that we found out what the mayor was doing was TMZ and Harvey Levin. That's the only reporters we have, with the exception of City News. They are garbage, and they will be gone as the LA Times is taken over. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker, Daniel Jones, and then Hip Hop Talks.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I have maybe an idea that we can pay for everything we got requested from this morning without a city bond. Probably an idea that—but I'm going to justify it first. This is out of—for the corporal over here. Military veteran code, section 122, person liable for service. This is where I have the right to make a citizen's arrest under the state militia laws. May upon their own be applied, or be enlisted, or commissioned their pursuant to provisions of this division. On my own. That means if everything else doesn't work, the people of the state of California, on their own, has a right to detain people. Okay? Thank you. All right, my justification. This is from Benjamin Franklin. The nation grows weaker, not stronger, when dissident voices are silenced and civil liberties are stripped away. Benjamin Franklin said it best. Any society that would give up a little liberty to gain a little security will deserve neither and lose both. Please, hey, ma'am, or reserve my time. She's—I mean, she can talk, I just can't hear her. I mean, but she's— My earlier said, "Reserve my time" 15 seconds ago, please.
The floor is yours. Please continue.
What?
Please continue, your president.
Can I stop my time? Because I'm being interrupted. I'm not having my full two minutes of uninterrupted discussion. I mean, she can—they can talk about what they want. I just—distraction, you know? Okay, here we go. Why don't we just shut the fusion center down? It's costing $187 million a year. Next Saturday, Saturday, January 19, 2:00 PM, KPFK, we're going to have a family town hall meeting. And if you're not careful, we're going to turn it into a Nuremberg trial. Parks, you gave—Martin Luther King—
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Hip Hop Talks, and then Jack Humphreyville.
Well, there's a conspiracy when it comes to the way these racially motivated attacks are being just not classified as what they are when it comes to the Hispanic gang members that are targeting and victimizing African Americans in our community, trying to run us out of our community. The authorities are aware of it. They know that in order to be a Hispanic gang member, you must be racist. You must make a vow and an oath to hate African Americans and to attack them and to run them out of our communities. The authorities are aware of it, and they're deliberately and willingly not doing anything about it. That's a conspiracy. You know, my son, I told him I was coming back down here because, you know, a Hispanic gang member chased my son the other day down the street yelling, "Nigga, I'm gonna kill you, nigga, I'm gonna kill you." And somehow, that's not a hate crime. That was okay for him to do that. He's still out on the streets. And I told him I was coming back down here because I've had three racially motivated attacks waged against me. My fiance and I also. And here's the thing. He's scared for me to come down here, see him with Dad, watch your back, and—because he's aware of the fact how the city attorney, when I was coming down here a year ago, how they trumped up charges on me and fabricated and tried to charge me with a crime that they know I didn't commit, and prosecuted me, but they didn't convict me. They dismissed it in furtherance of justice because they knew I didn't commit the crime. African Americans—you know, it seems like our rights are loaned to us and not owned by us. And Weston—Wesson is not—he's not a Sambo or Uncle Tom. I mean, when the majority say go to the left and you know we got to go to the right, you got to go with the majority. What else can he do?
Thank you, sir.
My name's Jack Humphreyville. I'm with the Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council and the great CD4. It's come to light that there's been some issues with regards to city officials working on campaigns on company time. We obviously saw something like that in the newspaper the other day with regards to Wendy Gruel. I think there are other city employees that are doing that, and one in particular I'd like to mention—two in particular I'd like to mention are both Chief Beck and Chief Cummings. They have been out there promoting the sales tax to various organizations around town on company time, during company hours, and using their official position. I don't think—I don't know—I'm not a lawyer. I don't know all the details, but that doesn't seem to be kosher to me. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next speaker is Dollhouse Dude. Yes, Councilor—
The city attorney, just one point I wanted to make. As we go out on any issue, we always speak about it, whether you're a public employer or not. People could vote yes and no, but it's our ability to communicate that to the people. So I just wanted to stand for the fire chief and the police chief, so that is their role, to inform the public. And if they vote, that's what they could do. Thank you, Mr. Humphreyville.
Okay, we have Dollhouse Dude, Henry Marine.
Yes, on a racial note, why can't we all just get along? The Hispanics go around thinking that the blacks hate them. Oh, you don't say black anymore. You say African American. And you cannot call everybody Uncle Sam that is taking your money. Don't call him any other kind of uncle, okay? I've been called an uncle by a lot of kids because I behave like an uncle, okay? The main point is, we go around acting stupid because we are divided. We are divided by race, by creed, by political divisions, borders, states, cities. Every city is a citadel where the cops will do whatever they want to do to you because you don't know the laws of that city. If you go to Santa Monica—I got my arm broken by a cop over there. I didn't sue him. Why? I don't want to make more enemies. You see? We go around dividing each other by money, by color, by race, by everything, when we should all be united, fighting for everyone to have a home. Everyone to have a place where you cannot be called homeless, bum, the N-word, the M-word. Somebody called me a Mexican the other day. I am a Mexican, and I'm proud of it. But you know what? First, I am a human being. I don't give a hoot about any other division. We are only human beings, and anybody that feels black or white or—
Thank you very much. Henry Marine, and then we'll have Richard W. Eastman, and then Eric Previn, I believe.
All right. You had three weeks off, so I'm sure each one of you read paragraph H of Hackla and Colamo U's, and currently know that Rick Tuttle, Heartshake, and Wendy Gru accidentally sent money to union trusts and let the city council borrow 10% of our take-home pay past six months. So the question is, when are you going to account for this money and get it rolled over to Lasers? Lasers and Calpers shows that anybody working over 1,000 hours, it is mandatory that they make contributions to Lasers and Calpers. Now, we got people here running for mayor and comptroller, you know? But it shows—Hackla and Colamo U's show that appointees and a mayor agreed to withhold from the pay of others and me for a maximum of six months in the course of a year. And you're ignoring it. But, you know, people at UCLA under Riordan Enzim, they're taught and—to—it's easier to ask for forgiveness than the legal work in the first place. So, who was with this? As of January 1st, anybody convicted of trust violations won't be able to hold office anyway, and this is election year, so you're wasting your $6 million contributions that you collected in the first place. Now, Mr. Ri—I mean, Mr. Wesson, we got a black president in Washington, DC. We got a black president in city council, and we got a—
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Richard Eastman, Eric Previn.
Distinguished city council, Richard Eastman, resident of Los Angeles since 1976. And the first time I addressed this council was probably in 1977, when the mayor was Tom Bradley, and the Hollywood sign was falling down. And I was a citizen living up in the Beechwood Canyon area, and I started a campaign to save the Hollywood sign. And yes, Alice Cooper and Hugh Hefner and Jean Atrey put up the quarter million dollars to rebuild the Hollywood sign, but that was one of my first civic advocacies that I've done for the city of Los Angeles. And yes, I grew up a gay man, and I worked in the motion picture industry. I worked at the Western Costume Company. And then I had AIDS, and I almost died from AIDS in 1994. And then about 10 years ago, I ran for city council to make Hollywood a city. It was called Secession, and thousands of people voted for me. And today, about 60 days before the March 5th election, I am a certified write-in candidate for the 13th council district, and I believe I'm the 13th candidate. Twelve of the usual suspects, including the mayor's aide, the councilman's aide, the local community activists, but none of them are a senior citizen disabled, living with HIV, who fought to legalize medical marijuana, and has a president who said on December 14th, Barack Obama, he's considering relaxing marijuana laws. And I know you're talking about potholes today, and I'm not talking about pot, I'm talking about medical marijuana. And Richard Eastman, running for the LA City Council on March 5th. The voters of the 13th council district, 250,000 people, 100,000 voters, 20,000 of them vote, 12 candidates. The 13th guy, you can write in my name, Richard Eastman, E-A-S-T-M-A-N, for city council, March 5th, 2013. A man of courage who will stand up for the people and fight for the people and make sure rent control and civil liberties are upheld by the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, our next speaker.
Good morning, city council. My name is Eric Previn, and I am a resident of Studio City, California. And I'm here this morning in connection with an item that came before this board in the end of 2012 regarding the Ethics Commission appointment of Erin Pak. Ms. Pak, who is known to the community as a very nice woman who runs a health foundation, is also married to Chris Pak, who is a prodigious fundraiser here in town and the topper at Archeon International, which does not have a website. I don't know that much about their work, but I do know that the Times picked up after we raised a red flag the idea that perhaps the appointment of Ms. Pak was not the best choice because she does not have law enforcement background. She does not have legal training or background. In fact, the best experience she has in the field of fundraising is in writing checks to politicians. So the reason why I'm here is because I know in city and county government, it can be—things can get lost in the shuffle. Some of the deputies who I spoke to this morning were not even frankly aware that this has already been approved because this came to your attention in mid-December and through a variety of city council maneuvers that I'm not expert on, was kind of slam dunked within just a few days. Obviously, Heather Holt and her team at the Ethics Commission did their best work in vetting Ms. Pak, but of course, that's fallen far short because of the revelations about all of the fundraising activity that she and her husband are involved in. Kathy Fang, who I know you all least respect, called this kind of story a hornet's nest. Now, I am not certainly in a position to take much more action than to raise this to your attention, but the city council has an Ethics Commission. We value those 10 eyeballs who are looking at the activities of this group and others, lobbyists. It's critical work, and it's exciting that we're taking it seriously. I think that the best way forward here would be for—Mr. Wesson, may I finish my—will you give me 30 seconds?
Thank you. Please finish.
Yeah, I'll finish. In 30 seconds or less, I think Ms. Pak should not be discredited in any way, but that Mr. Wesson and Ms. Pak should together decide—
Okay, thank you, sir.
—to find another choice who has more experience and would be appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that concludes general public comment. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer. I don't have any other cards. Okay.
The last one.
We have been posted and referred.
Mr. President, the desk is clear.
Okay, members, any announcements? Any announcements? Announcements? Okay, see none. Oh, announcements? Councilor Corcoran.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm pleased to announce that on March 30th, we will be resuming my Student Media Festival, which will be taking place at the El Portal Theater in the NoHo Arts District. And any high school student anywhere within the county of Los Angeles may submit entries to that film festival in the areas of animation, comedy, commercial, drama, or documentary and public service announcements. There are scholarship prizes, as well as an opportunity to have lunch with the president of CBS Studios. And submissions for the contest are due next week, January 16th. And more information is available at my website, and I urge any budding young filmmaker to take this opportunity to participate in the countywide Student Media Festival.
Okay, councilors, any other announcements? Seeing none, adjourning motions? We'll start on this side. Councilor Rosenthal, please rise, everybody in the chamber.
That I announce the passing of Catherine O'Neill. Many of you know her. She was an amazing community activist. Richard Reeves and her formed a dynamic duo that has impacted the world, to be candid with you. And if you can make the service on Saturday, January 19th, it'll be from 1:45 to 4:00 PM at the Annenberg Community Beach House at 415 Pacific Coast Highway in Santa Monica. There'll be a substantial amount of people there that got to know her the way I did over a lifetime, and I visited her not too long ago, but unfortunately, the cancer got the best of her. Catherine O'Neill was a well-known figure among Southern California Democrats, running twice for the state senate. After observing conditions in refugee camps around the world, she helped found what is now the Women's Refugee Commission. Catherine O'Neill, a social worker, turned political activist and advocate for refugee women, who was co-founder in the watchdog group now called the Women's Refugee Commission, died of cancer Wednesday at Ronald Reagan Hospital at UCLA Medical Center. She was 70. Her death was confirmed by her husband, author, Richard Reeves. O'Neill started the organization called the Women's Commission for Refugee Women and Children with actress Liv Ullman— "Such an access to food and reproductive health care," said Diane Quick, a communications director for a New York rope, which conducts research and advises international agencies, governments, and other organizations. Catherine had a passion for women and children's rights and made sure women were involved in discussions about what services they needed and how they are provided. She also was a well-known in local Democratic Party circles for her two hard-fought races to represent Los Angeles' West Side in the state senate. The first race to represent, which was in the twenty-fifth senate district, stretched from Malibu to Palos Verdes, took place in nineteen seventy-two, when few women were involved in electoral politics, much less an Irish Catholic mother of two who supported abortion rights. Her position on abortion brought the wrath of the Catholic Church hierarchy, which distributed a pastoral letter condemning her candidacy that was read from the pulpits of Catholic churches in her district. O'Neill, who had hoped to become the first woman in the state senate, can you imagine? There were no women in the state senate, lost by a single percentage point to Republican incumbent Robert S. Stings in all-male senate, was integrated five years later in nineteen seventy-seven by Rose Van Vuch, a conservative Democrat from the Central Valley. Two years later, in nineteen seventy-four, she sought the Democratic nomination for Secretary of State, an advocate of campaign finance reform, finishing a strong third as the contest was won by March Fang Yu. In nineteen ninety-two, after a decade away from the Southern California to work in public affairs for the International Monetary Fund in Washington and the International Herald Tribune in Paris, O'Neill plunged back into LA politics, leading a successful campaign to reverse a Los Angeles County Transportation Commission decision, awarding a contract for Metro Green Line Cars to a Japanese company instead of an American firm. Later that year, she made her third attempt for public office, running in a reconfigured twenty-third senate district which encompassed much of the same old territory of the twenty-fifth. Again, she was unsuccessful, losing to the Democratic primary to then Assemblyman Tom Hayden, who went on to win the senate. She ran for office because she wanted to get things done, said Kathleen Brown Rice, the former California State Treasurer and sister Governor Jerry Brown. She knew O'Neill for more than forty years. It wasn't about the power, something would tick her off. I might say that I've known her for a long time, and it's just an amazing relationship, a person that was truly dedicated to making the world a better place. O'Neill was, has a master's in social welfare from Howard University, a master's in international affairs from Columbia University, held a variety of jobs over the years, including social worker, co-owner of a lawn furniture company, editorial director for the Los Angeles radio station, KFWB AM. She was director of the United Nations Washington Office from nineteen ninety-nine until her retirement in two thousand and five. With Reeves, whom they married together in nineteen seventy-nine, she wrote a book about family travels around the world in thirty days, as often humorous account of a trip through sixteen countries with her children who raged in ages from ten to thirty-three. She survived by Reeves, along with her daughter, Fiorio, two sons from her first marriage, Colin and Connor O'Neill, two stepchildren, Cynthia Reeves and Jeffrey Reeves, a sister, Mary Ann Garvey, and a granddaughter. Again, as I mentioned, the memorial service will be held this Saturday at the Annenberg Community Beach House at four fifteen Pacific Coast Highway. And may you rest in peace, Kathleen. We love you.
Thank you, Councilor Rosenthal. Councilor Englander.
Thank you. Before I go through the adjourning motion, if we could, I'm sorry, one under item, item nineteen, if I could ask for that forthwith as well.
Okay, forthwith.
It's with great sadness, colleagues, that I ask you to join me in this adjourning motion in memory of a valley activist we've all known and loved and worked with for many, many years, C.K. Singh. C.K. and his wife Teresa Singh became one of the San Fernando Valley's leading Chinese immigrant business couples and small business advocates. They founded the Northridge Travel Service, one of the region's longest operating travel agencies. The recipient of many honors and awards, C.K. Singh served on the boards of the Northridge Porter Ranch Chamber of Commerce, the Northridge Business Improvement District, and Community Advisory Committee of Commerce Bank. He was the honorary mayor of Northridge from two thousand and two till, two, until nineteen eighty, from nineteen eighty-five until two thousand and two, and he was the recipient of the California State Assembly's Small Business of the Year Award as the chairman of Northridge Travel Service. The Sings also have extensive and longstanding ties to California State University Northridge. In the early nineteen eighties, they provided a scholarship to Chinese actress Joan Chen to help her stay here so she could attend the university's exceptional film program. C.K. Singh served as the president of the university's Presidents' Association Group and in support group in nineteen eighty-four. Through the years, the couple have regularly hired Cal State Northridge students as interns and employees. The couple have seven grandchildren and three sons, Roland, Nelson, and Eugene. May C.K. Singh rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Englander. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.